September meeting already, so we're happy to have you here. Jenna's around the center of the table. If you've not pulled one, feel free to grab one. At this time, are there any new members or guests that we'd like to introduce tonight? Anybody new to the club? Yes, ma'am. Could you stand up and tell them?
My name is Suzanne Norris. I moved to your office October, and I'm living in Frantford.
Pretty good. Welcome. Anybody else? And once, and twice? I think you're getting ready to introduce yourself.
The enjoy and stand up. Tell them who you are.
Oh, hi. I'm Steve Stein. I'm a guest tonight, so I need to give something, I guess. I've been absent for a while. I'm back, hi.
Welcome, Steve. Glad to have you back. Let's welcome our new members and guests. With that, I will turn it over to our chaplain for our invocation.
Thank you that you have given us this day. We ask your guidance, your truth, and the spirit of civility. In Jesus' name we ask you.
Frank, you want to take us to the pledge of allegiance, if I understand?
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. As the republic for which it stands, one nation, undrawn, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank God. Please proceed. So, moving right along, we did send out the August meeting minutes from this meeting electronically. You also got that email. I think Allie sent it, didn't she?
I don't know. Yes.
That's what I recall. Anyway, so they're out your email. Does anybody have any comments, changes, or amendments to make to the minutes as presented? All right. I want to ask a motion on that. And then we're good with that. So again, if you're interested in the recap of the meeting, it does come out in email. We don't cover it in the meeting, as you can tell. So if you're not on either Fay or Marie's or list, then please make sure your email is with us, and we can get you that information.
I will. People will know there's a simple card. Isn't it Morris? Ms. Morris? Have you filled out a card yet with your email stuff? Okay.
Oh, I did this at the fair.
Do you get how many cards?
She said she did it at the fair.
She still left a card.
She did it at the fair?
Yes.
Do you know who gave it to? I don't know.
All right. That's okay. We can work on that after.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Here's a sample of what you need to write the information down.
All right. Allie, make sure you come back. You're up next.
I don't think so. I'm on the way right now, as we speak.
Thank you.
While you're up and about, Allie will take us through her treasure report once you return to the chair.
Welcome up there. On the front table here is a day-to-day what the fair actually did, what we actually received in donations. If anybody wants to see it, there are copies up there. This is the emergency report. There's also copies up there. Looks like we started the month with $11,251.96. We received 29 cents in interest. We had $936.77 in contribution. We spent out $557.68. We brought our ballots to $11,634. Checks that were written were for pricking for the cutouts, the Trump bucks, everything for the fair, postnet for the pictures that were hanging in the fair booth. We had to purchase some extra tickets for poor little friends to get in. So that was 20.
Poor little friend.
$25. He worked so hard.
He did.
Okay. And I also had to order checks this month, and those were $22.26. So total expenditures for the box was the $557.68. And then we'll get to the fair stuff when we talk about there. Any questions? None?
All right. Like a motion that we approve the treasure report as presented. Second? Frank, second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are very blessed tonight to have our guest speaker join us. Mac Warner is a graduate of the Military Academy, spent 23 years on active duty. He's also a graduate of WVU Law and UVA Law, retired as a lieutenant colonel from the active Army. What I find interesting about Mac's background, he just spent five years in Afghanistan, putting together the Rule of Law Program for the State Department. Consider, I'm sure the Taliban are getting a lot of use out of that today. So we appreciate that. Upon returning to West Virginia, Mac ran for Secretary of State and was elected in 2016, re-elected again in 2020, has a white Debbie at home, and four children, all of whom have served or are serving this recognition. So with that, let's welcome Mac Warner to the floor.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. Is this okay to talk to you here?
Yeah, whatever you want.
I want to do a couple of things this evening. First, just let you know who Mac Warner is. Second, some of the things that we've accomplished in the Secretary of State's office. And then why those two things combined propel me to run for governor of the state of West Virginia. So appreciate the opportunity to talk with you this evening. And one, start back with the fundamentals, the growing up in the family, mom and dad. My dad was Presbyterian, or was Presbyterian Church. My mom was Methodist. And I mention those two because the Methodist background of John Wesley is a heart strangely warmed. And if you, in the Book of James, you know, what is faith if it's not followed with action? And that was my mom. And she was always engaged in law and so forth. My dad, the Presbyterians were known as the frozen chosen, okay? There's this more, let's read the Bible, let's study, let's get into the Word, that sort of thing. But not a lot of the Pentecostal, you know, and out there for trying to make converts and so forth, more of the study. So I got the best of both worlds, that heart strangely warmed at the same time studying the Bible and that sort of thing. So every Sunday we were in church, that church right across the street from the Capitol, where I now work, Ruffner Presbyterian Church. It's also where I became an Eagle Scout. And I mention that because from those earliest days, the things like the scout law and scout oath, you know, were just ingrained in, and then that propelled me into a military career. But any of you that have been scouts know the things such as, you know, scouts are trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind of being cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. And you would study those and what each one of those meant. And then the scout motto, you know, be prepared, do it good turn daily, and, you know, honor my honor, or do my best, do my duty to God and my country, to obey the scout laws, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically fit, mentally straight, morally straight, physically fit, mentally awake, morally straight. Again, those things have just been a part of me from that earliest age. So that's what leads me into this life of service, is then I go to West Point, and I raised my hand on the plane at West Point on July 2nd, 1973, and I swear to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And I want you to keep that in mind, because I want to come back to that, because I talk about my job as Secretary of State, and how that has shifted over time, the emphasis. And so I mentioned the scouts, and this is poignant because as we talk about leading the state, and what should we do? One other question was asked in Greenburn just last week. What would you do to improve tourism in the state? Well, I've been to Philmont. Philmont for decades was known as the Mecca of scouting, Philmont, New Mexico. And I've been there three times with myself, and then with several of my children. And I thought there could be no better place in the world, out under the stars of New Mexico, no lights, no city lights around, under the stars and singing the songs and all that sort of thing, until I experienced the Summit Vactil Scout Reservation in West Virginia that blows Philmont absolutely away. It is so far above and beyond anything that I ever experienced in my trips to Philmont. Let's not take anything away from it. I still encourage all scouts to have both experiences. What we have in West Virginia is truly an international, world-class facility. And so there are so many things that we can do in the tourism arena. We've just talked about this evening, so much history that is right here in West Virginia. Whether you come in from the east and Harpers Ferry and Beano Railroad, and coming through Grafton, and the first land battle of the Civil War in Phillipi, or you're coming in from Harpersburg, the War of Northern Aggression, that's where Meade brought his troops across from Ohio into Virginia to secure the railhead at Grafton, or from the south in the Southern coalfields and legacies, you know, John Henry and that sort of thing. We, the constitutional law, no matter which direction you come into the state of West Virginia, you're going to be experiencing history. And so I think that we can really exploit this history combined with the natural beauty of West Virginia with things such as the Summit Vactil Scout Reservation. It's going to really bring West Virginia to the fore. There was actually a study done about, you always think of Colorado when you think of outdoor life experiences, mountain climbing and whitewater rafting and so forth. Within the driving distance, West Virginia blows away Colorado. Because to whitewater in Colorado, you have to go to one area. To mountain climb, you have to go to a completely different area. To ski, it's another area. So West Virginia has it all right within just very confined spaces. We are so far above and beyond what Colorado offers. That's what today's, the millennials, that's what today's youth want. That's where they want to raise their family, this beautiful state that we have. We simply have to get that word out. And how do you do that? Well, that's one of the things I want to talk about when I get into my running for governor. So here's this guy, a little boy scout, raised in schools here in West Virginia, had this wonderful childhood experience, great parents, great church, all that. Goes off to the military. There, I first become an artillery officer. And so that's engineering. You see, you can put steel on target if you actually go through the motions of leveling the puddles, get your, get the piece set into the ground with a solid foundation. You get the right elevation and quadrant. All that is science. And then you get the atmospheric pressure, you get the rotation of the earth. All that stuff is very scientific and very mathematical. So you have to use that engineering degree that I got at the Military Academy. But there are two components of artillery. And this really came to me just about two weeks ago. We had a reunion of our artillery people from out of Fort Worth, California, and a couple of very poignant things came out. One was the sergeant major that talked about, to put steel on target, you have to have accuracy, but it also has to be timely. You see, you could be real accurate, but if you fire before the troops are ready for that, you've wasted that preparation in the battlefield. If you fire too late, our troops are already on the objective, and you're hitting your own troops. So there's a time component of putting that artillery on a piece of target. But you have to also be accurate. You can't be all over the board. That's why you have a forward observer calling in the rounds. That was my job as an artillery. So there's, that applies to our elections today. We have to be timely, and we have to be accurate. So I'll come back around to that. Did you see how these life experiences? I had no idea when I was doing that, that it was preparing me to be in the Secretary of State of West Virginia, at a time when elections are the center point of division across America, and America starts looking at West Virginia as the example of how to run elections? It's why I've been called to testify in Congress, in front of Congress, four times, both the House and the Senate, not about Mac Warner, but about the state of West Virginia and what we have done by working with the clerks, cleaning up elections, taking 400,000 people, names, not people, but names off our voter registration list. Folks, we only have 1.1 million voters. We take 400,000 names? That's how bloated it had gotten. But it took somebody with the will, with the desire to clean up those, or else it wouldn't have gotten done. We actually had four counties when I came into office that had more registered voters than we did people eligible to vote. So more people were voting and more people eligible to vote than citizens in those counties. So we quickly cleaned that up, and we've gone down now to the point where I've taken off over 400,000, we've added over 330,000 new people. So the differential is only about 70,000 or so. Just yesterday, we hit the 100,000th high school student that we've registered since I've been into office. So think, 100,000 high school students. And why is that important? Because we want to keep them here. That's our biggest challenge in this state, is not to lose population, to keep them here. We all want our sons and daughters, our grandkids living here. And how do you do that? You get them engaged specifically, get them involved in the process, so they feel they have a stake in the game, they have a voice, the vote counts, their vote is going to be counted. Every vote counts once, but not more. We run the primary election. So think about how we've changed from the days of 1960, when John Kennedy bought the election here in West Virginia. They bragged about it, they were proud of it, and West Virginia, along with Cook County, Illinois, became the laughing stock of the nation when it comes to voting integrity. That's not the case anymore. We have led the nation now with see something, text something. Every one of you that have a cell phone can be an extension of my investigative unit. By the way, we have five times the number of investigators now that we had when I came into office, so we can put somebody anywhere in the state within an hour, if there's a dispute over somebody electionaring when they shouldn't, or twisting an arm or buying a vote, that's right. Take a picture of it, text it to us, and we respond. The idea there is not necessarily to catch people, although we have about 18 convictions since I've been in office, where we do prosecute people when they double vote or do fraudulent activities. But the idea is that it's a deterrent value. You just pull out that camera as you're waiting in line to vote, and all of a sudden, you're going to see any of the activity, and the various stuff stops. So that's the idea, is to prevent it before it even happens. So while I have this out, I'll mention to you, it is easier to start a business right here in the state of West Virginia now than it ever was before. You can start your business at home, in your pajamas, on a Saturday night, right there on the phone, okay? We've invented something called SOLO, a single online location, playing off somebody who's a pilot in SOLO, they do it by themselves, and you start your business by yourself, right there. We're using generative AI. This is artificial intelligence. It's chat GPT-type technology. But what we've done, the technical term is geo-fenced. We have geo-fenced the access that you have on the internet, so when you ask for, how do you start a business? You're not getting how to start a business in Montana. It's geo-fenced to West Virginia specific. It deals with the West Virginia code, nobody else. So we have gathered over 900 questions that people typically ask when they start a business, and we've put that into the database. That's one of the other geo-fenced areas. So we know that when you ask the question, you get the same answer that you get when you ask that question, as opposed to right before that, you might call and get somebody that's been there 20 years, knows exactly what you're asking about. Doctors just tell me earlier, he had a question from a business back in 1993 or thereabouts. You might have somebody that's been in the office that long. Or you might get somebody we hired just last week. You think you're going to get different answers? Yes, they have different levels of experience. When you use this, you're getting the right answer, because it's gone through the West Virginia code, through my legal people, my business and licensing experts. You've got to get the same answer every time, and you get it on a Saturday night. You don't have to wait till Monday morning for somebody to pick up the phone. So we're leveraging technology in the Secretary of State's office. I'm operating with 15% to 20% fewer people than when I came in. So does that sound like conservative government, Republican style of government? Less government is better. That's exactly what we're doing in the Secretary of State's office. You think we could do that throughout state government? Well, let's take a look at it. So those are the things where we've improved the technology in the Secretary of State's office. We've increased the pay. When I came in, I was embarrassed that some of the paid people didn't. $23,000 for people that have been there 20 years. Folks, that's not livable wages. Now the lowest person paid in the Secretary of State's office is about $37,000. Much more livable wage. They are much happier, they're doing more with less, they're responding to you, the customers, in a more timely fashion, we're leveraging technology. And that is what I would like to take into the governor's office, dealing with DMV and DHHR and all the other state agencies. What is one of the governor's jobs? Well, one of them is managing the state agencies. Now, in the introduction, you heard that I was over in Afghanistan for five years, running the world's largest rule of law program. And what is that? I was working with the, I was responsible over 100 attorneys, both international and Afghan, and we were working with the Afghan Supreme Court, the Attorney General's Office, the Ministry of Justice, and the Ministry of Women's Affairs. Those are large agencies, national agencies, and I was one responsible. Why were we doing that? Because nobody wanted to invest in Afghanistan with a broken legal system. You want to only invest in a country where you know that if you sign a contract with somebody to deliver goods, you need to deliver it, you want to be paid for that. And if you have a dispute, you need to be able to take it to the court. They didn't understand the idea of having a prosecutor and a defense counsel. They said, why would somebody be arrested if they weren't doing it? They didn't understand the concept of a defense counsel. We had to train the judges, we had to set up the courtroom. We had to get inside and work with those ministries so they could prove that they were viable, so that the World Bank would give money to invest in Afghanistan. Now, does that apply to West Virginia? We need a working rule of law here in West Virginia, so that people trust the court system, trust the business community. And that's the sort of skill set that I bring, as I talk about managing the state's agencies. So that's a quick rundown on, I'm now managing or overseeing the registration and the upkeep of 143,000 businesses. When I took over, it was about 130. That's a salute to the business community in West Virginia. It's gone over 13,000 businesses since I've taken over. And so I think that's reflective of the economy, the enthusiasm in the legislature. I think they've done a great job with making West Virginia a right-to-work state, getting rid of prevailing wage, tort reform, medical malpractice. Those things have taken place as we've gone from a blue state to a red state. And so I just want to put the foot on the accelerator for what we're already doing here in West Virginia, and get us to really kick off. So that's a quick review of the business and licensing, my background in the elections arena. Folks, there are a couple of things. I know you had a question about the paper ballots and so on. The election in 2020 was stolen, and here's how and why. Remember when I said I swore to protect the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic? For my entire career in the military, I was worried about the foreign threat, okay? It was in March of this year, when Jim Jordan, House Judiciary Chair, only took that position because we won the 2022 election and took over control of the House, that he was enabled to put people under subpoena, put them under oath, and make them testify in front of his committee. He had Mike Morell there, the acting director of the CIA during the election of 2020. And he said, where did you get the idea that the Hunter Biden laptop was Russian disinformation? He said, I got it from Tony Blinken. Do you know who Tony Blinken is? The US Secretary of State right now today. He was a senior advisor on the Biden campaign. He knew that Trump was going to use the Hunter Biden laptop in the debate. He said, we need something to push back against that. He was the one. Tony Blinken gave the idea to Mike Morell to get the 51 so-called intelligence experts to say it was Russian disinformation. Folks, I get irritated about this. Our own CIA lied to us. They pulled a psychological operation, just like we would have in the military. They, where we do it against foreign countries, they did it against us. So for the first time in my life, I've had to worry about that domestic threat that I was sworn to uphold the Constitution for. And that's why I want to get the word out to everybody. Yes, there are concerns over ballots coming in after the election's over, concerns about algorithms, concerns about servers in China. Folks, this is under oath, in their own words. This isn't my interpretation or Jim Jordan's interpretation. This is Mike Morell saying he wanted Biden to win, and that's why he went to the intelligence experts. They lied to us, and what does they have to do with the election? Between 4% and 17% of the people who voted for Biden said they would not have voted for him had they known the truth about the Hunter Biden laptop. That's enough to change the outcome of the election. That's where I can affirmatively state, and I did state on April 27th, in front of Congress, that the election was stolen. And you could have seen some jaws drop when the Secretary of State said that in open, in front of Congress. But I think it needs to be said, because if we don't call it out, see, in the military, after any action, you do an after-action review, a hot wash, and you go back and you turn over the rocks and see what worked and what didn't work. Because people get killed when you make mistakes in combat. And so you have to analyze it. Well, things, people win elections when there are fraudulent activities. And I think there were fraudulent activities in the 2020 election. I want to address the paper ballot thing real quick, because I get casted that all the time. Folks, I have evidence back in my office, people that did a review, an audit, of an election in Massachusetts where paper ballots were used. And 300,000 ballots in that election, the votes were determined by somebody other than the person who cast the vote. And what am I talking about? I'm talking about if you think of a paper ballot where you're filling that in, like you do an ACT test or an SAT test. Here are just some of the examples. I've got it in the hard copy that actually worked. Okay, you're supposed to fill in that circle completely. But what you have is people that put their pen on the paper, and then they pull it back. It's called a hesitation mark. Or they doodle on it, or they circle it, or they underline it, or they put a check mark, okay? Or they tell somebody to vote for two people, and they vote for three. That one goes right out the window. So I've become a real proponent of the ESNS express vote system, and you all have that now in Greenburn County. And what it is, it's like a kiosk at a Sheetz, where you order a sandwich. So you get up there and you say, yes, I want mayonnaise, no, I don't want pickles, and whatever. And it spits out your order, and you can see right there, that's what I ordered. And so when you get your sandwich, you can check it out there. That's the same thing with this ballot. You put in a blank piece of paper, you make your votes. If it says vote for two, and you try to vote for a third, it won't let you. It eliminates the human error on a lot of these ballots, okay? And it fills it in completely. And if you only vote for one, and you're allowed to vote for two, it will remind you. Now, you don't have to vote for that second, but it will say, do you want to vote for a second person? So it eliminates a lot of the human error. Now, let's get to the paper ballot part. Once you finish, you hit complete, it spits it back out. You now are holding that piece of paper, so it's a voter-verified paper trail. So we are using paper ballots in West Virginia. You can verify that that's what you voted for. You put it into the tabulator, it automatically tabulates it. What do people want? They want election results on election night. If you don't provide results on election night, the conspiracy theories start, the fraudulent concerns begin. So it tabulates it automatically, but then it drops it into the ballot box. And now, after the election is over, there is a 3% audit, random. You don't know which precincts are going to be audited. But they pull it out, and they hand-count those paper ballots, and they compare it against the tabulated amount. If there's any discrepancy, then the paper ballot controls. I have not had one discrepancy in six, seven, eight elections since I've been in office, where we use the express vote system, where there's been a difference between the paper count and the tabulated count. So that's why I have high confidence in these ballots. So people can argue about being connected to the internet, or algorithms changing, and all that stuff. I haven't seen it in West Virginia. So I have high degree of confidence, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. Hopefully, I can share with you, so you can vote with confidence. And if you don't like it, I encourage you to go be a poll worker. Work and watch how this works. Be on the inside. Go to the logic and accuracy test. They do that the week before the election. It's open, go to the public, and go watch them do the testing on the machines. And I was in Pinal County at the last election, and they said, we pick any one of them randomly. There were 200 and some machines there. You could pick any one you want, a person from the public, and say, I want that machine there tested. They'll pull it up, do the logic and accuracy test, show you, you get to do the vote, you get to see the tabulation. Be a part of that. If you don't trust the machines, be a part of it. And then if you still have doubts, let me know about it. Write the letters to the editor and so forth. But don't just take what you're hearing on Fox News or CNN or whatever, the conspiracy theories are hearing on the radio. Go yourself and be a part of it, and I think it will eliminate your concern. So I hope that addresses your question about the paper ballots. Thank you. With that, I'd be glad to turn it over to you, to any question I might, best use the top.
You're absentee balloting?
Yes.
You're talking about in-person ballots?
I think West Virginia has it right. We're one of 16 states that require you to have a reason to vote in absentee ballot. They don't just mail the ballots out. I'm totally against just mailing ballots out. I think that's, in fact, it's not me. Jimmy Carter and the Baker Commission, Carla Baker Commission, they had the 2000 election, Hanging Chads in Florida, you remember that? They had this commission, and they found, because they've been all over the globe, that the most secure form of voting is in-person on election day, using a paper ballot, under the watchful eye of trained observers of both parties. The least secure form of voting is absentee, is voting by mail. So the closer we get to an election day, in-person voting, the more secure, the more trust we can have in those elections. But the West Virginia legislature has decided that they will give you 11 different reasons, and you have to check which one it is. Is it medical? Is it you're serving in the military? Is it you're out of state on business? You're in the hospital? Those are different reasons that they give, and you have to check it. And if your neighbor wants to challenge that, if you said you were going to be out of town to vote, and they saw you and your car on election day and so forth, they could challenge that. And then there could be an investigation and say, we're going to invalidate that ballot because you weren't allowed, it's supposed to be voting. But that seldom if ever occurs. But I'll give you some quick numbers. The typical election in West Virginia, up until COVID, we only had about 7,000 ballots absentee throughout the entire state. During COVID, if you remember, we were, it was peaking in May of 2020 during the primary, and the governor moved that election 30 days to give us more time to get PPE and all the hand sanitizer and everything, so we could have a safe election. During that primary, we had 224,000 absentee ballots, about a fourth, okay? But by the general, we had removed that, and the Attorney General had opined that it was appropriate that everybody in the state could use a medical excuse to vote absentee. That's why you had such a high spike. That went away in August, and so by November, not everybody could vote absentee, and it went down to about 130,000. The next election in 2022, it had gone down to 13,000. So we're almost back to where we started with, with about 7,000 ballots being cast absentee. And our election in the process, and I agree with you, the sooner we get back to voting in person, the better. But that's up to legislative, it's not my call to question their judgmental legislature. If we want to change, like voter ID, no drop boxes, you know, those kinds of things, that's a legislative process. Yes, ma'am.
Now, if somebody objects to an absentee ballot, how can they tell which ballot is theirs?
Well, a couple of things. If you can do it, say, before they open the ballots, you know, if somebody votes absentee, then you see, you go to the county clerk. It's a county clerk thing, and then they would, if it hasn't been opened, I agree with you, if it's already been opened and the envelope's separated, you got a problem. That's what happened in Harpers Ferry. Four votes. Once that ballot goes in that ballot box, that's why I'm totally against drop boxes. Once that ballot goes in the drop box, how do you separate that from the legitimate voting? Somebody dropping more than is supposed to. See, this is something I think our legislature should take out. Our law says you can only drop off two ballots. Once somebody drops off 10, do you try to sort those eight out that are... Once somebody drops off 10, do you try to sort those eight out that are not proper? How do you do that if they're in a drop box? You know, the clerk has accepted that. Do you prosecute the clerk? Do you prosecute the person who delivered it? Do you prosecute the people who put those ballots in? That hasn't been addressed because people really haven't thought about it, and the people who do the vote by mail don't want to look at it. Most of the Democrat states, and so forth. So these are the type of things I've moved to, told the legislature they should be looking at. That's another discussion that may take up a while. But I would push you to push your delegates and your senators to address those issues if that remains a concern.
Because it's already a ballot, and it's already been counted, been in boxes, been counted, and there's no tracking number on it. It cannot be poured out?
Exactly. Yes, ma'am, please.
What are the relative virtues of voting for weeks and weeks before election day or just voting on election day?
I don't think there are virtues to voting early. But, again, it's a legislative thing. I think North Carolina, they have like 45 days ahead of time, and they're allowed to try to change the vote. If you put it in, and you change your mind, and you go back and try to pull it out and that kind of thing, think of the problems that is on these overworked clerks already. Okay? So I don't see the merit, especially as a candidate. When do you start spending your money? Do you do it 45 days out, 30 days in, two weeks out? You know, that sort of thing. Our legislature, I think, has found a good middle ground. They allow 10 days of early voting, starting two weeks out. Again, I, as a conservative, I would like to make it on election day. There's a real history to voting in America with regards to the early voting. The absentee balloting started with Abraham Lincoln in the Civil War because he wanted his soldiers, he had a real contest on his hands with General Meade or whatever, and he wanted to have those soldiers who were going to vote for him to be able to cast a vote, so they sent it down. Now, think of the, if we have problems right now with concern over ballot integrity, think about being traveled by horseback, bringing those ballots back to the district. Think of the opportunities for throwing away ballots or changing them and so forth. But that's where the absentee balloting started. And then you get into secret ballots. You used to vote on the courthouse steps in person. They say, "Who wants to vote for George Smith?" Hand, you go up. Well, it's a very secure form of voting. You can count six votes for George Smith, and three votes for Tom Jones or whatever, but there's no secrecy there. Okay? And people are being coerced because if your boss is standing there, you better be voting the way your boss is. Okay? That kind of thing. Do you remember, if you watched the presidential debate, and they asked the question, you know, "Do you agree with Pence and his actions, or should Trump be..." Whatever. You know, swamp, Rob Swamy's hand went right up, and other people were looking, and they started putting their hands up. That's the way it was voting on the courthouse steps. So again, the secret balloting, that all came in in the 1870s, 1880s, and we started having much more secure forms of voting. But this absentee balloting has stuck with us. So I, there's no right answer because there are people that have trouble getting to a polling place, inform, and others, issues, and travel plans and that sort of thing. So our legislature has found this middle ground, let's say, 10 days is about, you have to have a reason to vote absentee. You don't have to have a reason to vote early. They just offer that as a convenience. But it does present problems to us as candidates as to how you spend your money when you spend money. So, yes, sir, please.
In South Carolina, I've started businesses, and the same here in West Virginia. And when you call the government in South Carolina, the person who answers the phone is prohibited from saying no. If you want to ask the question of how do you do something, or can you do something, they cannot say no. They could say, "Well, if you change the word 'and' to 'to,' it will be authorized." But if they, when they say no, then you have to go to the second person in the chain of command. And if he says no, he has to give you the manual, the page, and the paragraph authorizing the no. And when you get it down to that, everybody is keyed in on the same standards. You know exactly where you are, and you know where to go to to look for the exceptions.
I love that. I love that. I may just take that up with my office.
Here, you call Charleston as no.
Hopefully not with my office. If you get that experience, please let me know. I may just implement that tomorrow. Yes, ma'am.
Mike, I think we're all convinced that we've had good elections the last couple of elections. I'd be interested in hearing what your plans are to make West Virginia a better place to live, a more profitable state.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Education. I've been going to be an education governor. I think everything starts with education. And I'll start with saying, I think that, again, our legislature has made some good moves with putting assistance into the first grade classrooms this year. Next year, it's going to be first and second, year after first, second, and third. Why is that important? Because for the first three years, first, second, and third grade, you're learning to read. After that, you're reading to learn. So think about it. Think about algebra problem in seventh, eighth, ninth grade, and that sort of thing. You have to be able to read to understand what's being asked, and be able to write to give the answer. Science, geography, whatever the classes are, when you get into middle school and high school, you've got to be able to read. So if you miss that opportunity to learn to read in the first three grades, you're going to get further and further behind as you go. And why is it important to have an educated childhood? Because we're preparing you not only for life skills, but an educated workforce. And that's what everybody, every employer in West Virginia is now struggling to make sure that they have enough, that they can keep them. And it's also the life skills so that they can raise a family, keep our kids, keep our grandkids here. So everything starts with education. Then you start talking about opioid crisis. Folks, if you're educated, you're less likely to turn towards the drugs. When I start talking about drugs, the opposite of addiction, many people would say, "Oh, it's surprising." And I say, "No, it's not." The opposite of addiction is connection. When do people turn to addiction? It's when they lose their job, they lose their family, they get kicked off the sports team, they get injured. They, it's that disconnection from the community. And that's why I think YMCA's and other organizations like that are so important. Because if you're on a sports team, your buddies are going to try to keep you from shooting up or taking drugs and that sort of thing. So that education, it keeps coming back, the education, the education, the education. Yes?
Where is the woke current affection for wokeness in the state of West Virginia?
Well, I think West Virginia, the reason we turned from blue to red so fast is because I think we typically, take the labels Republican and Democrat off of. I think we've been a conservative state, pretty much all of them talk about the churches and the lifestyle, family orientations and so forth, is a conservative lifestyle. Right now, that Democrat Party has gone so far off the rails. They have gone radical. Okay? Not just left, but they've gone radical. And so we can laugh at some of the things like pronouns and that sort of thing. It's not funny. But when you turn now to letting boys play on girls' sports teams, going in the girls' locker rooms and bathrooms, if you've ever heard of David Barton, okay? Religious historian, okay? Google him and say, just Google David Barton YouTube. He's got some great videos, and he talks where this whole thing started, in his hometown of Fort Worth. There was a guy elected to the Board of Education with not very many votes at all. It was like 11,000 or 1,100 and so on. Okay? Not a lot of people in a big city like Fort Worth turned out to this Board of Education. Well, this guy got the idea that boys and girls should be able to pick their own sexes and so forth. And he implemented it in school. Well, who else but Barney Duncan, Obama's Secretary of Education, heard about it and said, "If that's happening in Fort Worth, that's a pretty good thing. We need to implement that nationwide." And he put in this, that if you receive federal funds, you can't dictate to a child which gender they are. And that's how this whole thing spread nationwide. And his point was, it's interesting, we're right here in the church. He said, "There is one church in Fort Worth that has 3,000 people. If we'd just gotten that one church to get out and vote Christian principles, that guy would have never been elected. We would have not been dealing with this nationwide." Where I really get hot about this is when they start talking about the mutilation of the kids, the changing sexes, cutting off body parts. Now, I think we're into criminality. Now, I think that we should be prosecuting the doctors who participate, the counselors who hide it from the parents, all that sort of thing. Under my administration, you aren't going to have any of this wokeness. We're going to be focused. I'm the only teacher, the candidate running for office, I'm the only one who stood in front of a classroom and taught. Okay? And I understand the importance of every minute you have in front of those students. You want to impart on them what they need to know to succeed in the military, in the legal profession, in school, in life, and so forth. And when you start going down the path of CRT and gay pride, transgender, and all this other stuff they're trying to push on our kids, you're wasting that valuable time. We need to be teaching kids. Once they get to be 18, once they go to college, if they want to study that, that's their choice, but not as a child, not in West Virginia. I hope that addresses it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Isn't that part of the national curriculum, the wokeness in?
Well, that's what they're trying to push on us, yes. And that's why people have said, "Let's just ban the Department of Education and so forth." But it's being fought nationally, it's being fought state by state. That's why Youngkin got elected in Virginia because he pushed back against that. They said that the parents shouldn't have a say in the education. There was a revolt, and he got elected, and back out, parents have a say in Virginia. And I want to join Youngkin in Virginia on education. I want to join DeSantis in Florida on immigration, Abbott in Texas with the wall security. I don't want those drugs flown in here because we're seeing it in Martinsburg, we're seeing it, you got right here. We need to stop that nonsense. So I plan to join those very conservative governors, be a part of that, just like right now, I'm part of the coalition, basically the conservative Secretary of States who are trying to get voter identification and security into our election system. Probably a little time, I want to say more. I don't want to overstate.
No, no, you're fine. Don't think I'm...
If anybody has other questions or issues, yes, sir.
You mentioned earlier in your opening statement the right to work, the prevailing wage.
Right.
Is there a current movement to try to get around that and get that back in? I've heard something recently where they're...
Let me tell you, just a week and a half, two weeks ago, I sat down with the AFL-CIO. Now, you wouldn't think that typically of a conservative candidate running for governor is going to sit down with the AFL-CIO. But folks, I'm a student of Stephen Covey and the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. In his first three habits, he talks about moving from dependence to independence. So think of a child being very dependent, but as you get older, you go towards independence. So you have to first get yourself squared away personally. And once you get yourself squared away, now if you want to move into the public arena, now we start looking at habits four, five, and six. And habit five, four is think when when. Habit six is first seek to understand, then to be understood. So you first, you've got the two ears and one mouth. Use those two ears. First, seek to understand what the AFL-CIO, what the teachers junior, what anybody else on the left is saying. We have to pay attention to that. Because I'll be governor of everybody in West Virginia, not just the Republican Party or whatever. So I want to hear what their positions are, because there may be some good ideas in there. We have to find. Then the next, the habit six is synergize. So 1 plus 1 doesn't equal 2. 1 plus 1 equals 5, 7, 10, whatever. You know, you give, you know, I gave my wife, asked for her hand, and she gave me an entire family. It's not just 1 plus 1 equals 2. I got four beautiful children, seven grandchildren. You give a woman a house, she'll make you a home. Okay? You look for ways to synergize and make something much better than just the one-on-one, where acting on their own. And so then, then the seventh habit is sharpen the saw. Always go back and review, am I doing what I was supposed to do, and, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, and so forth. So my point on the prevailing wage is, yes, the AFL-CIO, when I sat down with them, they said, "We want to restore prevailing wage." I disagree with them respectfully. I said, "We're going to have to agree to disagree on this one." They were very consideratory or understanding. They respected my position, I respected it. What they're trying to do is represent the workers and so on. So to answer your question, yes, there is, they are continually going to push that. I don't think they're going to get very far in a supermajority Republican House and Senate, but yes, there's always that push. Yes, ma'am.
Why is it so difficult to find employees right now? Everyone, everywhere you go, everyone you talk to, you can't find people to work in your home, you can't find people to work in businesses? And why is that?
Because under COVID, we have all these government giveaways.
And they're still in effect?
They're still doing that.
Yep.
Now, our legislature has moved things such as unemployment, they moved back from 24 weeks to 12 weeks, that sort of thing. So I think our legislature is cognizant of that, is moving towards that, but I think we need to go further. You shouldn't be able to make, there was a statement, again, back to David Barton, I think it's on one of his tapes, he talks about, there are people in states who've been told, "If you don't make over $61,000, it's better for you to stay on welfare and take the unemployment and those kinds of things." I mean, that's, think about that. When I just told you about my office moving from 23,000 to 37,000, these people would be saying, "You ought to all go on unemployment and, you know, whatever government handouts you get." Folks, I saw it firsthand when I was in Afghanistan. Okay? Every one of them wanted to come to America, and they all wanted to go to California. I said, "Why California?" Because they said, "You get six months of federal giveaways, the house board, food, and clothing, and if you don't, if you're not, if you haven't found a job by then, they'll extend it another six months." It was the most liberal, progressive giveaway program. They have researched it from Kabul, Afghanistan, they knew that California was the most, you know, gave away the biggest government fund. We need to cut back on that, get back to what biblical teachings, if you don't work, you don't eat.
Yeah. And the state can't control that?
Well, they can. It's a legislative process. Maybe they can't control all of it. Think about this. Think of the single mother who has a boyfriend, and they purposely don't get married because if you're not married, you get more benefits for your children and so forth. So you're going to take one more children. We need to clean that up.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I want to thank you for your service. I also want to thank you for mentioning education as a priority, but I'd like to know what you think about healthcare. Healthcare in the state really needs something.
It does. And I'm not being forced to tell you. I am not the expert on all the different things that are coming my way, but I can give you the approach the military has taught me, and that's the staffing process, and that is the task force process. So right now, we have issues in corrections, we have education issues, we have healthcare, we have each one of these. As governor, I will appoint the task force necessary with the experts. If you're a teacher, get on that task force, be a part of the solution to advise me. And so the military's way is you staff each, you get three proposals, and then you bring it to the commander, the commander makes the decision, and then the others go away, and you focus on that. on, on that. So again, it's been ingrained in me that they didn't teach me what to think, they taught me how to think and how to problem solve. And that's why the military is the most respected institution in America and even the world. And that has just been ingrained in me from the day I raised my hand on the plane at West Point. So I will take that military approach to solving problems, if you like that. Some people say, oh, the military's too rigid and so forth. If you like that, vote for somebody else. But if you like the way the military solves its problems. You see, when we have a disaster, who do we call on? The National Guard. COVID, call on the National Guard. Mine collapsed, National Guard. Flood relief, National Guard. Who should be the commander of the National Guard? The candidate running, other than, you're looking at the only veteran in the group. You have the guy that knows the difference between a command sergeant major and sergeant first class and understands the hierarchy. See, everything that we do in the military, you have the staff, the one shop, two shop, three shop, four shop. One shop is personnel, two is intelligence, three is operations, four is logistics. You need all of those things to accomplish big tasks. And so I understand that staffing process. I, I drove my staff crazy the first year because they had never done that. The lawyer thought he knew the best how to write because he'd been in the law school. The crime scout thought he knew the best because he communicates with the press. The chief of staff thought he knew the best because he had oversight over their whole office. And I didn't let anything go out of my office until fifth through each one of those, and sometimes back a second or third time. But after about a year, they all got it. And now, when something comes out of Secretary of State's office, it's usually polished, we know it's correct, it's very, and it's succinct. Okay? The military teaches you how to write, situation, mission, execution, whatever. Okay? And you go to it in there, understand it. And so I start with there. What's the situation? What are we facing in the education system? What are we facing in the healthcare system? Then what's the mission? What are we going to do to solve that? Then the execution, this is what we bring on the task force. Okay? Here's how you're going to solve a specific problem identified. So again, I don't want to overload you with that, but I just want you to get a feel for how my thinking thought process and why I'm ready to step into the governor's office on day one. It's not going to be on the job training. It's going to be somebody who's battle tested, constitutional, Christian, conservative. That's my perspective. When you hear other people talking about battle tested, they're using an analogy or whatever. I'm talking real life, folks applying that, the IEDs going off. And yet maintaining cool and getting them focused on the mission and getting it done, constitutional, two masters, three and all. That's why I buy by the constitution. When the legislature gives me a way to run elections, I don't try to second guess it. I execute what they've given to me. Christian, we talked, we talked about that at the outset. I come from a biblical perspective and upbringing. And then conservative, I like to preserve what has worked in the past. I don't like to get in the progressive route. See, the question that Jesus Christ was asked by Pontius Pilate, what is truth? Jesus responded, I am the way, the truth, and the life. He gave that answer, the truth. You know, Pontius Pilate, what is truth? Well, to a conservative, truth is unchanging. Just open up that Bible and it tells you, the Ten Commandments, it tells us how to live our lives and so forth. The progressives think that truth is subjective. It's what do you feel? What do you feel? You know, your feelings are going to be different than somebody else's. And that man knows best. Man is basically good in the progressive's eyes. From the conservative's eyes, man has the original sin that we have to all deal with. And if you recognize that, that's why we want smaller government, less government, because government is not the solution. Government should only be doing what citizens can't do for themselves. So anyway, I'll get off my cell phone because I'm preaching for you guys. I think we come from the same perspective. But again, I hope that you liked what you've heard this evening. If so, I'd ask for your vote, your support. If you don't, then find another candidate that suits your means. But I appreciate this opportunity to come here and talk.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reece got one question for you.
One more.
Sure.
Well, first of all, thanks for your service both through our state and to our beloved Happy to have you here. I love your conservative values, so I agree with all of them. I have a concern and something you may not be aware of. I don't want you to comment on this, I know you can't, but I'd like to voice it. This is an issue that's been ongoing in the Greber County Republican Party here. It came to light during the service of the former, not this one, but the former county executive committee. It discovered that there were serious questions about finances. I was a member of that committee. We're concerned about this issue and there was an audit performed by Baker Telly of Charleston. I'm sure you know them, members of the world's largest county advisory network. And that is in the hands of the Secretary of State's office. And as I say, you know, you may not be aware of any of this, but I wanted to make you aware. This audit concerned the Greber County Republican Executive Committee and their chairman, Ben Anderson. I understand that reports filed by Chairman Anderson to the West Virginia State Republican Executive Committee were found to be erroneous with funds not accounted for. We in Greber County are most concerned by this, and I think we need answers and want this claim, claim to be resolved. And if there's anything at all that you can do to look into this, I would appreciate that so much.
Can anybody enlighten me what it is within Secretary of State's office?
There's an audit.
Yeah, but we don't deal with audits necessarily.
We don't look at complaints that we, like, if complaints are submitted
Right.
For a financial filing that an executive committee or a political action committee has.
By a legitimate official.
And if you filed an informal complaint with the Secretary of State's office.
Yes, if the formal complaint is filed, who handles that?
I'll get my attorney on the phone right now and see if he can answer that. Do you have Deak's number? Hey, Deak, you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I got you on speakerphone. I'm here in front of the committee. And there's a question about a financial complaint that has been filed with our office. Are you aware of this?
Financial complaint?
Yeah, I'll tell you what.
Is it related?
Yes.
Yes, there's a committee. I think all the information about it, but.
So our office does have it, but we can't disclose what the investigation, where the investigation is right now, correct?
That's correct.
Got you. Okay. All right. Other, once something is filed, it's official complaint, then we cannot discuss it. I stay long.
I understand that. Not asking you to, no, no.
So.
I understand that completely.
So is there something, another question you have for me or?
Uh, would you please look into it?
Sure.
Yeah. It's there, yeah, let's do something.
But if it's in black and white, I mean, if it is in black and white that one campaign candidate has given to another campaign candidate, it says right in the rules that that is not allowed, not correct.
Again, I'm not aware of the situation.
Okay.
They purposely keep things away from me because they can't disclose it publicly and.
Mac, I think, I think the question is that we know that there are numerous campaign finance violations. And once those things are filed, we know that Kim Mason is the investigator. And all Donald Kersey does is he writes the opinions when he's informed of it. What we're, the people are concerned about is how did we find out what happened? Did we make a legitimate complaint? And if the complaint is legitimate, how has it been resolved?
Okay. Deak, you want to address that?
I've talked to Deak about it before.
Well, maybe, maybe it's just informing the club and the process may help ease the concern. For us, if you haven't got the dismissal, then that means they looked at, we can't discuss, we can't technically use the knowledge to just judge an allegation, but that's sort of silly if we know a complaint is dark or a complaint is shallow, not one of those complaints got attention, it's way again. So we, I won't play out the ball there, but if you haven't got the dismissal, that means we're looking at it. Can't they find it's laws and the regulations? Give every candidate in any committee an opportunity to mitigate or remedy the errors that they committed in ten days once they get a notice. When we have a complicated issue, for example, when there are 20 allegations against a particular group of people or two independent candidates, we have to compile all of those and consolidate them into one case. So every opportunity for this person or candidate to get to respond and mitigate those, that timeframe gets reset for every new allegation. But once they get the receipt, once they receive the notification from us, it's mailed out with efficiency, they have ten days to fix that problem. However, sometimes it takes longer than that because they may pay more for this, maybe they have to be corrected or maybe the bank account is changing, nobody has the authority to make it all the rest. There's a lot of technical prerogatives up there after half, but ultimately, and I think this is my most important here, we don't play the gaga game. We are complying for them. So our, our role here is to make sure that they comply, whatever time that takes to do it. If they don't comply, it's when it gets referred to a problem. And so, and again, we're talking around, it's not specific to particular cases, we're talking about other cases. But can't they find it's all itself? It's all retroactive, implement arms, have it passed, starting first, try to get transparency out there, get the right information to the public. And when there is a problem that can't be remedied, then it gets to a proxy. But that's usually rare in the can't be fined. Because I think they have two can't be fined by the first proxy that clearly looked at thus far.
So basically, a complaint can stay open for a year, two years, three years, four years, five years, 10 years?
Whatever it takes to get it to the bottom.
But if it's in black and white, it just seems like it should.
We appreciate that. I think you were very clear. I guess what the answer is that if you haven't been notified that it's been taken care of, it's still open. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And by law, when it's closed, you have to receive notice in writing until it's in the certified there. On the timing of these things, we have anywhere from 100 investigations done, if they didn't get it down across the state. But keep in mind, we regulate not just statewide, county, county, we have to get all 231 million ballots. And I'm sure if we had a Green Friday, you have a Stanford situation, there's lots of politics, concerns, things that people file, which might inform us, you have to look at every single one. We have a lot of work that we do any year of the week on investigation. And so that's why the legislature puts the task force in place for all of it, five years, not a day, that's what we do it. It's just they recognize the sheer volume we have to work on. It takes a lot of time. We have to tend to meetings, disturb by mail, give 21 days to respond. It's just like the courts, it takes a long time to build a case and get it to a resolution.
So it sounded like Mac could have had some more ideas.
I would love to say I'm fine, Mac, but we are the investigators across the state. It's just things are not happening for.
We, when I came in, we had two investigators, we now have 10, plus some of them are trying to jump us off. So we are getting after it. Did you have a comment there, Deak?
Well, just keep in mind, like I said earlier, it's one, what's up with this? Can't they find it for us? And then for what, I'm not going to help the woman, I'm not paying care for that, it works all the time, no matter what party or who it is. No matter how great you say everything, they, the work with the common bond, they received documents that wasn't prepared, they have to return, then they have to remember to get the final. They can't record it, solve their books, they have to pocket money, they can't, they got to stay out of the pocket or get money back. The one they got doesn't have a proper, one document filed out. It's mainly white, color, title, civil investigation. I'm sorry for talking here. It's, we're complying for a different one. Only if the candidate is known for this, it is complying, that it gets to a, it's a gift to the most right to take.
All right. Thanks, Deak. Appreciate it. Sorry for bothering you.
Not at all. Thanks, Kelly.
Let's take one more moment and thank Mac for all his conversations. We're going to talk about some family business for a little bit. And what I'll start with is have Allie give us a report on the fair, and we'll talk a little bit about our finances and how that went.
Are you sure? You want me to?
Given a basic rundown, the booth rental was $425 is what we paid. We paid $100 extra for insurance, that if anybody got hurt from the booth, that we would be covered. Our supplies were $535 and 48 cents. The purchase of fair tickets was $315. For grand total of, the fair cost us $1,375 and 48 cents. Now, with our donations of $845 and 81 cents, we went in the hole, just a little. $529 and 67 cents. Basic rundown, weekends did great, thanks to volunteers and Brent and everybody, so we did actually get money, but not enough to go in the block. I think maybe we need to look into something a little different for next year.
I would say, and again, I really tried not to speak to that part, but my impression of the shift that I worked was it was a different crowd this year than last year. Last year, people were much more giving, they were frankly angry, and they were more willing to throw money at it. I think people were sort of, my impression was people were kind of numb to the whole thing. And it was harder to get people to crack open their wallets this year for some reason. And I think that was part of it. I think, you know, we focused on Trump as the, you know, kind of the main attraction that seemed to continue to carry a lot of water this year, you know, pictures, that kind of thing, but.
I think, I think everybody had a really good time. I knew the workers did, the people there loved to cut out. So I mean, I think it was, those were the volunteers and it got our name out there and it got, you know, recognition a lot on Facebook. I saw a bunch of tags on there and I've seen people posting pictures from our booth, which kind of showed, you know, the backdrop of everything. I did include a day by day accounting, which there are copies right there if anybody wants to see what we made day per day. And basically, all I have on finances.
That's okay. That's good enough.
Why don't we ask Dolly and the walk-ups, what their impression was?
Well, I think we're opening up the floor. We'd like to input from everybody that went to the fair and what they, what they thought. And Brent's going to take some notes and then give us his thoughts at the end. So go ahead.
Well, I think, you know, there wasn't any candidates running for office this year, you know, so it's in between years for have somebody to support. So I think maybe that might be why people weren't willing to contribute as much coming through because there's, you know, who do they thank, you know? Some of the questions is, you know, what, what are, what do we do with the money or that type of thing? But I like the attendance on Thursday was rather light in the building itself. And then Friday evening, there were four people there. So I don't know what the attendance was like on the other days, but I think during the week, it, it looked lighter to me than normal.
But did you have a good time?
Yeah.
Terrific. That's the important thing.
Yeah, that's what Brent told us, is have a good time.
Would you like to follow his thoughts?
Barbara?
I'm, I'm sorry that Brenda Payne is not, not here tonight, because she related to me that she was so pleased with her time at, at the booth. And she was particularly struck by a group of students from Ohio that were passing through. I think they probably had been on some sort of a mission trip. And the reward was to stop by the West Virginia State Fair. And they were so interested in the Republicans and Trump in particular, they all had their pictures taken, that they bought dollars. And what struck me is that it was students, we obviously are reaching some young people now that are, that are starting to maybe come back to the conservative way of thought.
I noticed that a lot of younger, maybe not teenagers, a little younger, kids that came by, they all know who Trump was, they all wanted their picture taken with him.
That was my experience as well, much to the chagrin of some of the parents.
I think for that show, it's a party at home.
Yes, I do too.
Well, I'll tell you my story real quick, and I'll, I'll call on Steve in a second. We were sitting there at the table, and, you know, the family came trotting down the hall, and a little girl ran up to the side and said, oh, mommy, there's my president. Boy, you should have seen the sky on Dad's face. Walked right by. I thought that was exciting. Steve, you worked a shift with, any thoughts?
Yeah, Pat and I failed miserably. I think we collected $2. So we didn't charge for pictures with Trump and we gave away Trump dollars for free. What we did.
Now, that was an argument, not an argument, but an issue we had. Okay, so the Trump dollars were for donations, like, you didn't, they didn't have to necessarily give a donation. Am I correct in saying this?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so you did not fail, you did an amazing job. Thank you for your volunteering. So let's, let's get that straight right now, because we did have an issue with that.
No, well, we were told that if we wanted to keep up with Patrick North's life, that we better step up our game a little bit, because she was working it hard. But, you know, what we did notice is that most people that came by, there were some younger folks that were very well informed, that everybody wanted to talk about national issues. Everybody wanted to talk about the White House. You know, there was nobody coming by asking about local candidates, what's going on. It was all national. And frankly, nobody came to the booth, you know, in question. They came in support, and looking down the aisle, a couple more booths, if we were so old on Saturday morning, boy, it was almost vacant down there. So.
Any other feedback from folks that worked, worked the fair? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I didn't work it, but that's the reason I'm here, is because.
We'd love to have a couple hundred of you. Brent, go ahead, Tom.
Well, I didn't work the fair, but I worked as press at the fair. So I was by the booth a few times and took some pictures. And just being over at the different booths and even being by the Democrat booth, I think the club was actually where we needed to be. You know, we had modernized, we're trying to upgrade our stuff, we're doing what we need to be doing. So I think we were, you know, right on par where we needed to be.
Thanks for that feedback. Brent, want to give some thoughts?
Yeah, I have several. First, I want to thank Doug for the guidance that he gave me, told me how to do what we're going to be doing. And I went with him to Beckley to pick up the backboards that the pictures were mounted on. This was all due to me. And I was a rookie, and there are some things that I didn't keep account of, like the money for each day and each half a day. But I do want to commend Frank and Barbara Tuckboller. They were the old pros who knew how to ask for donations, and the, the daily receipts reflected that. And I was instructed by that. The newcomers for this year, the stars were Bob and Dolly Walkup. And I thank you. They enjoyed it a great deal. And I enjoyed getting to know some of you better. And that was very enjoyable to me and knowing how to connect with the people who were coming by. It's an active process, people in the booth to engage the people walking by. It's not their job to engage us. And many people love getting their pictures taken with the Trump shirt. As we pointed out, there were not midterm candidates seeking office. Uh, as we pointed out, there were not, um, midterm candidates seeking office, and I think from my experience, I gave, uh, money in twenty-twenty-two to the Senate campaign nationally, we're supposed to have this big red wave, to talk about being disappointed is to say the least of it, and I think a lot of people felt the same way I did, why throw my money at things that are not going to happen, I hope we will have a better case to make next year, and, uh, I think we should have people who are definitely engaged in pulling people in to talk with them, eight out of the people, eight out of the ten people who walked by were pro-Trump.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, it was very encouraging, uh, the more you talk about the indictments and the charges against them, uh, the more angry they got, and so I think that was something definitely that will spill over into next year, and I'm looking forward to working with that, but, um, thank you for all the people who did work, I'm in your debt, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brett.
So I would also like to thank everybody, I, I haven't had a chance to, collectively thank you all for taking time out of your day, it's a busy day to, to spend out there, hopefully you found it rewarding, as we all talked about, it's like a positive experience, uh, to Allie's point, you know, we, we, it is, uh, an opportunity to, to, to feed the beast, so to speak, so, uh, we did, we didn't make quite a bit of money last year, we didn't do it well this year, uh, it's, it's for a lot of folks that were new on shift, it's just an opportunity to kind of, uh, think through that, the thing I would ask you to do coming out of the fair, uh, if there are things we can do to improve, things we can do to make it better, more crisper, you know, whatever, click, click Brent's note, that we're gonna, you know, before everybody forgets about the fair in the next thirty days, uh, send those notes to, to Brent, so he can capture that for next year, uh, I think Thomas was perfectly accurate, we did try to up our game a little bit this year on the fair, so try to look more professional, and try to have some of those materials available, uh, next year, as a number of people mentioned, the, uh, you know, the primaries will be over, we'll have our slate of candidates going into, uh, the fall election next, next August, so it will be a lot crisper on who's, who are in the candidates, uh, that we're gonna support.
And I think that's just another problem right there, is like, we do have some candidates that have come forward, um, Chris Rose was running for US Senate, and then he dropped out, and now he's running for District Two, West Virginia Senate, we had JB McCoskey, who was running for Governor, now I think he switched to, what, Attorney General, so people don't wanna give their money, because it's like, well, I'm gonna back this candidate, but then they're gonna switch to an office, and then be running against a candidate that they're supporting, so that's a big part of the problem.
And just, just for clarity, and, and Doug drove this, we invited every candidate, GOP candidate in the state to submit materials to us, some did and some didn't, so, and our stance is traditionally not to support any candidate going into, uh, prior to the primary, so the literature was available to them as information, but we weren't supporting anybody up to it, so you had several for Governor, several for Senate, that kind of thing, out there, so, but again, thank you all for your time and effort to make the fair successful, and I look forward to seeing a lot of you again next year out there. Uh, with that, let's talk about some new businesses for a few minutes, uh, that we have left, um, I'm sure most everybody's aware, but, uh, Delegate Mike Honaker did in fact resign his position in House Delegates, uh, last week, uh, he is now the Inspector General, uh, for the Department of Homeland Security for the state of West Virginia, so he will be relocating Charleston, and is no longer gonna be, uh, supporting District Forty-Six, uh, with that, the nomination process opened and closed, uh, we could have a number of nominees to submit their paper, uh, formally, uh, we had three that actually have come up as, uh, as candidates that will be presented to the Governor, uh, to review, and, uh, he will select, hopefully, one of those three, and again, I think everybody's aware, the Governor doesn't have to select one of those, he can pick anybody he wants, uh, but traditionally, though, those folks are out there, uh, just so you know who they are, uh, Sue Spicer, who is a member of the club, uh, did, uh, uh, didn't submit her nomination, uh, Jeff Campbell, who is also a member of the club, uh, is the second one, and Dana Payne, uh, who I believe was Treasurer of the Executive Committee at one time, uh, is the third out there, and so, um, that is the, the information I have on that, I don't know if there's any discussion or anything that we would like to pursue on that matter, but I can open the floor for any topics or discussion along the delegate process, yes ma'am?
The, uh, Republican, the Federation of Republican Women have requested that the Republican women notify the Governor that they would really like either Dana Payne or Sue Spicer.
That's correct, I have a copy of that letter, and that, that letter was submitted to the Governor this week.
But we need as individuals to back up that letter with a, just go on Justice West Virginia, and you can contact him, and you can fill out the email form, and submit it to him, so the more of us that back up that letter, the
I've got copies of that letter, that, uh, have some of the qualifications of the people, and, uh, it, uh, I'll be glad to pass these out, and it tells you how, it has the Governor's address on it, if you, they've been questioning whether the club should, uh, contact the Governor on behalf of these people or not, but I've thought about that a whole lot, and, uh, it, it's not really a nomination process, people apply for that job themselves, and then the, uh, the state party vets them, but all they do is they check to see that they are a Republican, that's why there were six people who applied, and only three of them made it, one lived in a wrong area, one was not even a Republican, and one of them didn't get his, uh, his, uh, application completed, so they, they vet them for where you live, whether you're a Republican, whether you meet the age requirement, and, uh, then they send that back to the Delegate District Committee, and if there are three people that apply, the Delegate District Committee does not even have to meet, they just submit those names, if there's, uh, less than three, the committee has to meet, and they have to start through the list of eligible Republicans and find the, find the second or a third, whatever they need to give the Governor three, if there are more than three, they interview them and vet them with questions provided by the state party, and vote on, there's a, a protocol for how they vote on them to, uh, give the Governor that list, but, uh, I think it probably would be more effective if the Governor got, uh, letters from individuals.
I, I would agree, I mean, I think that means more many, you know, a bunch of organizations, so I think
There's a number you can call too, I don't have the fifty like now, uh, and, uh, the person that answers the phone will, will take the information, will pass it on.
So again, I wanted to share that with everybody, so you knew where, where we stood, and, uh, we do have vacancy out there, there are three, you know, decent candidates, or nominees, or applicants, however you wanna call them, and so I would encourage you to, to reach out and, um, share your, your thoughts on that.
We're not going to select one of those, and for our club to support with the letter?
There was no motion from the floor to do that.
I don't think it's, all of the Republicans are too exact a team, or something, if you can be sure.
I think the club's bylaws is that we remain neutral.
Uh, that was, the, the previous bylaws did very clearly say that, and that was through the election process, it does, the new bylaws has been, that has been eliminated, but
And I didn't realize the Governor, uh, could select somebody outside the three sent to them.
I believe that, that's been, he's done that before, I believe, he's right, he's selected a delegate outside of, uh, their recommendations, I think one of the, another county, another, yeah, that happened
That happened in Wayne County, because the, the, the Delegate District Committee did not meet, and it was the county Executive Committee that submitted the name, therefore the Governor just ignored that, and selected the first one, because they, I'll call it a protocol, the protocol is pretty rigid.
Well, the protocol and the bylaws say he selects from three, doesn't mention anything about including anybody else.
That's, that's right, we don't know, I don't know that he's ever done, done that.
I was just removing that previous
And I was on the
They've run a couple of times, but that was because they were improperly submitted.
I was on the selection committee, but since only three were qualified to send to the Governor, we didn't have to meet and do anything.
Alright, then we'll move on, try to close this thing up quickly, uh, the last thing I have is something I wanted to take just a moment to talk to you everyone about, um, and that's the items for the good of the club, uh, on the, on the backside, we, we had an opportunity, uh, about a week ago, uh, some people in town, and they're, they're asking us to participate in a food drive this holiday season, uh, the people that we are talking about is the Democratic Women, uh, they have asked us to come together in a bipartisan fashion, and help the needy out in, in Greenbrier County, and, uh, I think, uh, just in my opinion, and several of us were at the meeting, it's a, it's a worthy cause, uh, it does show bipartisanship, um, and, uh, I, I did not see a reason that we, uh, should not continue to pursue the conversation, uh, but I did wanna open up to this, this group tonight, and if there were concerns or questions, or, uh, things you were uncomfortable about, I wanted to make sure we heard that, and we could discuss that as a group, because, uh, we are gonna move forward in the planning process, uh, and the execution of that, so, if anybody has any concerns about, you know, what we're endeavoring to do, uh, then, and I'd like to hear that, or if it feels a good idea, I'd like to hear that as well, I suppose.
I think it's a good idea, if you need to look at people, not parties, when you're doing
And I think that's, we're trying to, we're trying to check our agenda at the door when we meet, uh, you know, for those of you that are familiar with the local area, the, uh, Lewisburg Food Pantry is right behind me, so they, they serve out of this, this room a couple times a month, there are nine food pantries in the, in the county, that drive will support, uh, all nine, when that comes up, the dates are gonna be probably mid-November, mid, through mid-December, so it'll capture our Christmas dinner, which will be a nice little adder for that, um, and then the, the intent is to get donations out to all the, all the food pantries here in the community, uh, and it is gonna be, again, the, the thing that will come up, that I'll mention here in a minute, uh, will be, you know, the, the experience they've had with doing this in the past, is you have to open and close the, the pantry at certain times, and so we're gonna ask the volunteers to accept donations during, during different parts of the week, uh, and we haven't navigated that space at all, but we'll come back to you and, and talk to you about what those volunteer opportunities could look like, and it won't be intrusive, uh, but to be fair, and, and parity, we'll have to staff some of that drive donation center once we identify that, so, I didn't hear any concerns, yes ma'am?
Uh, my thoughts are that maybe we ought to start writing a can of food for each one way.
We can certainly talk about it, yeah, we, uh, we've got a, so, there's a, I think it's a great idea, and there's lots of great ideas we're gonna have on this, but, uh, we, we need to have one more meeting with that, with the Democratic Women, and kind of hash through all the details, we're starting to replace the store of the product, for, for example, uh, and once we get all that nailed down, then we can begin to build all of the collection, and start to, to pull that together, so, I think I hear support from everybody, and, so with that, I, I thank you for that, and that is an important thing for us to do, and it's helping people in the community, and I think that's good, and, and that, that will show us, you know, we can be the adults in the room, and we can partner with these people, and, and do positive things, and I think that's, that's a good story.
They are our neighbors.
Well, they meet right here, you know, they, they meet opposite us, it's the room they meet in as well, um, so, you know, there's a lot of synergy to us working on this community project together, and so, uh, but if there was any concerns, I wanted to make sure, one, you knew what we're doing, and two, you, uh, knew, uh, what, what was happening, yes ma'am?
Where will our contradictions be stored?
I don't know yet, uh, we're working on that, which is why I didn't wanna get anything yet.
There are two people looking, three people looking at the places to do
Yeah, we've got several people that are looking, I'm gonna look, and see if we can do something here.
Hopefully after the twenty-first, I'll be able to clearly answer.
Yes, we'll come back to next month with some better, better input on that, but again, if, if there was a, a lot of discomfort, I wanted to be able to come, go back to that group and say, we're not gonna fly, but I, I appreciate y'all supporting that, and I think that's the right thing to do, uh, some dates to remember, real quickly, uh, Monday, September eleventh, uh, this is a community thing, we, uh, the American Leash Post here in town is doing a flag retirement ceremony at two o'clock at the, uh, on Rhode Island Amphitheater, so if you wanna come out and, and recognize, uh, that event, we, we certainly appreciate that, uh, support, uh, we'll meet back in this room on the fifth, uh, Chris Miller will be our speaker that night, Chris is gubernatorial candidate, he is, uh, he is, uh, running for, uh, Governor, uh, on November second, again, we'll be back here, and, uh, Ryan Wells, Senator Wells will be here, he's Attorney General candidate, gonna talk to us about what, what that, uh, what that means to him, and then finally, we're getting into the Christmas season on December eighth, that Friday, we'll be back at the Dutch House for our Christmas dinner, it's already that time, folks, uh, which leads me right into my volunteer opportunity slogan, uh, as I've mentioned, the, the food drive will come up, we'll give you some more information if we have that, but be thinking about that, you know, it's something that might be nice, so you can participate in that, as well as the dinner committee, I've thought this for several months, but we'll continue to do that, we are gonna get more serious about the dinner here in the next, uh, forty-five days or so, so if you'd like to participate in the dinner process, be part of that committee, we'd love to have you, uh, be part of that, so, any other items for the good of the club, or updates that I can entertain, Thomas?
Um, I would like to make a motion that the club moves forward with the food drive.
Oh, very nice, okay, you have a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very nice, thank you all, thank you for doing that, uh, I'm gonna close with a document that was handed to me on the way in, and this is, yes ma'am?
Oh, yeah, I talked with Russ King today, and
Oh, yeah!
Those of you that know Russ, know that Russ was kind of the heart and soul of this club for a number of years, and Russ is, uh, is a hospice care, and he, he says he gets worse every day, uh, he's very pleased with the way that people in the hospice are taking care of him, and he said, he, he hardly has the strength to stand up long enough to shave, so he's, uh, doing very poorly right now.
Is he at home?
At home, he's at home, and plans to stay there, so I'm sure that, uh, people wanna give him their prayers and their thoughts, you might wanna give him a call and talk to him.
And his address is in here.
You're gonna leave it, leave it upon the
Yeah.
So keep Russell here, keep Russell, and his family, 'cause that's a very good focus, and a pillar of this organization for many years. With that, I'm gonna close with this, uh, article I was given from, uh, September ninth, nineteen fifty-six, uh, this is Frank Doug W. Tuckwiler, a name you might be familiar with, who's a Democrat for the GOP, just to summarize, uh, Frank W. Tuckwiler of Lewisburg announced the formation of an independent Voters for Eisenhower Committee, and the said group also would support GOP candidate Cecil Underwood for Governor, and Chapman Revercom for US Senate, and the article goes on to talk about his aspiration to that, and how he just planned with the Democratic Party, so, my, how the world has changed, so our thanks to Frank W. Tuckwiler and his descendants for their good work in Greenbrier County.
That was the front page of the
Yes, it was, yeah, talk about the crisis and the Suez on September
Go, Frank!
Very good, uh, with that, folks, I will, uh, call a meeting adjournment and ask, uh, Mr. Kirk to lead us in God Bless America.
Let's all sing.
God bless America, land that I love, stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above, from the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam, God bless America, my home sweet home, God bless America, my home sweet home.
Thank you all for coming today, appreciate you.